Someone's rocking my dream boat. Someone's invading my dreams. We were sailing along.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call the City Council meeting of October 27, 2015, to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll. Councilmember Francisco, Hart.
Here.
Hachkis.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Okay, any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, public comment. I have a couple of speaker slips here. Two minutes at the podium. We'll start with Scott Wentz, to be followed by Tom Becker.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Scott Wentz representing Cars Are Basic. I was looking in the news press the other day and they had a comic from Beetle Bailey, Killer and Beetle are walking through the forest and Killer goes, "I think we're lost." And Beetle goes, "Are you sure? Well, we're halfway through the forest. Let's keep going. There's no point in going halfway when we're trying to get lost." From our point of view, this is your transportation policy. You're building bull bouts when you have no statistical evidence that prove they work. You're spending over a million dollars at Kaipala, Colorado, taking 17 feet out of an intersection that's very busy, making it hazardous for bicyclists. Councilman Hachkis said to Mr. Bailey, "Is this going to interfere with the bike path?" He says, "No." But what it's going to do is it's going to put a curb right next to the bicycle path that eliminates the safety factor on a very, very busy intersection. I ride through there all the time. I need that seven feet. It's absolutely amazing. Went to the Architectural Board to review, talking about the roundabout on Cliff Drive in Las Pecitas, and I brought up a CEQA issue. And I quoted this CEQA page here that says that if you have an option that meets the parameters, the state of California says, "You can't do it. We have an option." That says that now you're in violation of the state of California law by going ahead and spending taxpayer money for a multimillion dollar roundabout that's not needed. And the environmental footprint, by digging out that intersection and putting in that roundabout, is going to be huge. You have to stop making decisions that are in violation of law.
Tom Becker will be followed by Richard Robinson. The final speaker will be Tom, Tim Gerst.
Hi, Tom Becker. You know, I wasn't even planning to come here today, working underneath the trolley. And I gave my girlfriend a call to see how her day's going, and she mentioned the fact that she had been reading News-Hawk. I read an article, I think it's a press release by the police department. The police had received a $280,000 grant from the state in connection with the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration, $280,000 grant for safety, for motor vehicle safety. And I kind of thought about that, then it connected to something. Yesterday, I read in News-Hawk that during Halloween, the police, the police department, along with sheriffs out in IV, going to have a super heavy-duty law enforcement activity for Halloween. And there's, there's a disconnect here. In this city of Santa Barbara, you have so many bars, so many nightclubs, and your revenue is so heavily dependent on those bars and nightclubs, you encourage people to get drunk, to the point where the police department has to have a special law enforcement activity on the Halloween to deal with all the drunks that you help create. And then what do you do? You go out and get a $280,000 grant to fix the problem with all the drunks that you created by encouraging that kind of industry, that kind of business, to exist. I don't know, it just seems like there's a disconnect here, that if you didn't encourage people to be drunks, then you wouldn't need to give the money to the police department to take care of all the drunks. I don't know, this makes common sense to me. Try to encourage young people, drink responsibly, don't get drunks, don't be drunk. That way, you won't need to hire a bunch of those guys back there. You could actually lower crime and maybe save the taxpayers their lives as well as money. Thank you.
Richard Robinson.
Honorable Mayor, members. Janet Yellen, Federal Reserve Chairwoman. Ma'am, those who thought that there will be a rate hike in the interest rate, the Fed charges to borrow will have to wait until next year. Because of China's difficulties, as its former communist ideology proves itself increasingly unworkable, we are protecting our nation's economy at the Fed by keeping their interest rate at zero. That rate established by Alan Greenspan in 2008, in 2008, when Barack became president, it was a tool that allowed the United States of America to defeat Saddam Hussein's attempt to destroy our economy. Easy money. Flooding the world's economies with greenbacks. Brilliant. Because our nation is rapidly losing its dependence on oil, we are no longer being held hostage by Muslims at OPEC. So because you will not have to worry about greedy developers drilling in the channel, oil platform construction like the pipeline from Alaska are unnecessary. As the world converts to electric, solar, and wind, you stand as a colossus straddling the past and the future. Business growth in this sanctuary is permitting those who have been traditionally marginalized, American natives. Someday, we're going to have an American native president. We will truly be, pardon Native American myself, we will truly be of the people. Our president at that time, after Hillary. Thank you.
Tim Geist.
Hello. I made the council a little, for a minute, video that I invite you to, to take, that's a present for you. Can you hear me okay? Okay, my name's Tim Geist, and I'm a proponent for Measure 2, excuse me, 150051, the Proof of Truth in Federal Elections Initiative. So the object is to make political lies more obvious to low-information voters. And the way to do this is to make it possible for proponents of an advertisement to subject the facts of their advertisement to the same perjury statutes that enforce truthful testimony at a court of law. So that's it. I hope you'll take a look. It's a little more elegant than mine. It's only four minutes long. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So that concludes public comment. We move on to the consent calendar, and you have some items to read.
Item number two, adoption of ordinance to permit car-share operations on city-owned properties and within the right-of-way. Recommendation that council adopt by reading a title-only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara, adding Chapter 10.73 to the Santa Barbara Municipal Code to establish a car-share vehicle permit program. Item number three, introduction of ordinance for the grant of easements to the County Flood Control District on airport properties. Recommendation that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading a title-only and ordinance to the council of the city of Santa Barbara, approving the granting of easements on city-owned airport properties to the County of Santa Barbara Flood Control and Water Conservation District for flood control and all related purposes, and authorizing the city administrator to execute as necessary the grant deeds in a form approved by the city attorney. Item number six, renewal of Santa Barbara Regional Recycling Market Development Zone designation. Recommendation that council adopt by reading a title-only, resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara, approving the renewal of the designation of the Santa Barbara Regional Recycling Market Development Zone, and authorizing the County of Santa Barbara Public Works Director, or his or her designate, to submit an application to CalRecycle. Requesting renewal of the Santa Barbara Regional Recycling Market Development Zone comprises the unincorporated areas of Santa Barbara County and the cities of Beelton, Galida, Lompoc, Santa Barbara, and Santa Maria.
Thank you. Without further objection, we await further reading. Is there anyone who needs to pull anything off the consent, or is there a motion to approve it? Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question on number six.
Okay, that's the renewal of Santa Barbara Regional Recycling Market Development Zone designation, which was just read into the record. Mr. For, I guess you can come on up. Go ahead, Mr. White.
Thank you. There are, the staff report indicates that there are projects which, and funds that are expended, and yet I'm not getting a sense of what those projects are, what the, what funds are expended. So could you give an example or two of what, what this initiative is, would be doing and what the costs might be?
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, Nat4 Environmental Services Manager. The intent of the Recycle Market Development Zone is to encourage or to offer low-cost loans to entrepreneurs and businesses to use recycled content as feedstock in manufacturing process. To date, the expenditures related to the zone are very low. They're mostly administrative, and so each of the member jurisdictions put in a couple thousand dollars a year to essentially cover the overhead and training and reporting that Santa Barbara County does on behalf of the other agencies. In terms of the loans that are made by the state, there have been very few. And that's one of the reasons why we are looking to partner with Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce, because they have, we think, better relationships and better opportunities with actual manufacturers to indeed implement this type of program. Where I came from, in Monterey County, I had been there for 10 or 15 years, and we had only funded two of the projects, albeit they were rather large. So the funding activities are, there's usually a good interval of time between them, but so far, the costs that we've incurred have been primarily administrative.
So what would be the, an example of a project?
Oh, absolutely. So, so I'll give you one real-life one. In Monterey County, the state granted a several-million-dollar low-interest loan to a construction firm to take asphalt and rebar and concrete, crush it, and make it back into road base, which saved thousands upon thousands of tons that used to go into a landfill in response to AB 939. That was one example. Another one could be reusing recycled content, plastic pellets, for example, in, in the manufacture of new plastic products. That would be one other common thing. So buying machinery and buying infrastructure, for example, that would allow that to occur.
Thank you, Mr. For. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Moved by Rouse, seconded by Francisco. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Report from the Finance Committee. Mr. Francisco.
Madam Mayor, the Finance Committee met today and heard the September 30 investment report and fiscal agent report, recommending them for full adoption by the City Council, which just occurred.
Bokey doke. Thank you. Item number 14.
Citywide Performance Highlights for Fiscal Year 2015 and Comparative Indicators Report for Fiscal Year 2016.
Great, Ms. Johnson.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Nina Johnson. I'm the Assistant to the City Administrator. And today's presentation is going to be covering our performance management program and comparative indicators report. I'm just going to give a little bit of background, and then I'm going to turn it over to Kate Wan, who coordinates the program with all of our department representatives. So today's presentation is focusing on our performance management program, which, which basically establishes, helps departments establish and monitor their workload throughout the year. So we're going to be looking at highlights from what has been completed, and truly the highlights of the highlights, because there are many objectives each year, looking at what departments have achieved over the last fiscal year. We're also going to be looking at management indicators. Supervisors and managers receive regular information on sick leave, injuries, vehicle incidents, and so forth, to help them manage their areas. And then comparative city indicators. Our comparative indicators report is going to give us a shot-by-shot look at how the city compares to similar communities by demographics, population, other visitor-serving coastal communities. So we're really able to get a glimpse of financial indicators and other service areas for efficiency and effectiveness. So to give a little bit of background, our performance management program guides how we plan and prioritize our work. All of our performance objectives are included in the annual budget that is reviewed by the City Council and adopted each year. And by performance objectives, we're talking about hundreds of performance objectives throughout the city organization that include targets for specific operational areas, and then also projects to complete, or project milestones to complete within the fiscal year. Regular status reports are prepared by each of, all of the department's staff, so status reports are prepared biannually, and then they're also tied to performance reviews. And what this, the idea behind this is that frequent review and reporting really helps everyone discuss the workload and identify areas for improvement as needed. And then the program also helps us communicate program results. This is a timeline of what I just described. Just look, focusing on the first left-hand portion, we have about 130 program areas throughout the entire city in all 10 departments, and program owners who are either supervisors or managers who are responsible for the day-to-day performance in each program area. They're the ones charged with preparing the objectives and performance measures for each area of their, the city. So we have 130 total. Those are incorporated in the recommended budget and reviewed, and then at the right-hand side here, council's receiving an annual report today. I do want to take a moment and say that we've had this program for over a decade, and just recently, over this last year, under Kate's leadership, we developed a database that has improved how departments track all of the information. So we've made a lot of improvements to save time. So I thank everyone for that. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Kate, and she's going to dive into the details.
Hello, my name is Kate Wan. Madam Mayor and councilmembers, I am the Administrative Analyst in the City Administrator's Office. And I will bring to you just some highlights. You have the full report there. These are highlights of the highlights, I should say. We do have many performance reports, but we have so many good programs going on, and it's part of my role is to work with the departments and the program owners in crafting what their new objectives are going to be, and working with reporting on them, and making sure that their data is correct. So that's part of my role in that. So I would like to bring to you the highlights, and just show you, this is the overall quantitative results, which by no means tells the entire story of what the value is. The true value in the program is, it is part of a continuous improvement cycle. These will be divided into categories that show various public values, contribution in grants, effectiveness and efficiency, excellence in customer service, infrastructure improvements and maintenance, new initiatives, policy and enhancements, and regulatory compliance. So we had over, this is taking a look at the revenue received, not grants awarded necessarily. There is a slight difference there. But we received in revenue over 24 million in grants to the general, actually not all to the general fund, in grants. And these are some of the programs that those represent. In terms of effectiveness and efficiency, I have a few examples. Our first responders are great examples of effectiveness and efficiency. Their response times continue to beat the targets every year, and I'm sure, you know, all citizens can, and visitors to Santa Barbara are grateful for that. More effectiveness and efficiency, this is of a different kind. This is an example of two different programs that have really focused on improving preventative maintenance and improving, using a response plan, like the drought response plan, to really tackle a specific problem. So wastewater treatment increased their ratio yet again. They upped their bar and are trying to do more preventive maintenance than the emergency response type of maintenance. And they're already up to 83%, which is above their target. Parks and Recreation did the same thing. They raised the bar yet again. They had saved water last year, and again, they saved water, 4% above their target of 20%. So they are doing well because they've made it a focus. And that's part of this program, is just making, highlighting and making objectives a focus. More effectiveness and efficiency? Excuse me?
Just one, on the previous slide there about the ratio of preventive maintenance to emergency work orders. What has been the, the change over time there? I mean, one way you could increase that ratio would be just to do a lot more preventive maintenance and still have the same number of emergency work orders. So what, what has changed over time there? And I see Ms. Bjork coming to the fore, perhaps, to give us more details.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director. The wastewater section has, for about seven years now, really been working on a program that we call Asset Management. And that's a, that's a program that really focuses on individual maintenance of every physical asset. And so a big part of that is changing to doing the appropriate level of maintenance in time to prevent the equipment from breaking down. So really, it's been a complete work shift from waiting for more, more routine maintenance and repair, to really moving towards effective preventative maintenance in order to reduce the amount of responsive maintenance that is needed.
So those, so the number of emergency work orders has actually declined?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
And I will add, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Francisco, that the, five years ago, the percentage was 43%. Two more examples of effectiveness and efficiency are the custodial work, the response to custodial emergencies throughout the city facilities within two hours is very much appreciated by all staff and visitors. Their target is 95%, but they responded last year to 100% within two hours, which we really appreciate. Another example of a community-wide effectiveness and efficiency program is that each year, the fire department coordinates the efforts to clear a certain number of miles of road of the overhanging brush and the thick brush along the public roadways. And that, that is then chipped and mulch provided for water conservation. There are several programs that have excellent customer service. These are, I've picked out some programs that have some interesting numbers with them. The Police Community and Media Relations Program has neighborhood watch meetings, school presentations, 111 assists on a community problem, and three citizen police academies. The waterfront, as you can see, this, from this, it's a Michael Ison photo that he let me use. I love this photo of the cruise ship. This is one of the Princess ships. And there's 20, we had 27 cruise ship visits this year. Over 90,000 passengers accommodated, and the waterfront does a great job, waterfront department does a great job of helping to facilitate that, along with the other community organizations. So you can see that there's a tremendous customer focus there. In water conservation, again, focus on the customer has really, I think, helped water conservation provide the kind of reductions that we've seen. This is, we all know and are proud of how much water the community has saved, and I really do see that reflected in their P3 objectives. They set high targets. Street sweeping is another customer service. 19,000, you know, plus curb miles swept. And just a reminder that curb miles are, you know, there's curbs on either side of a road, so it's more than actual miles. We have many reports, you have heard many reports, on infrastructure improvements, so this is a highlight of a few significant one, projects that were completed this fiscal year. There were water and wastewater projects, 11.5 million. The Punta Street Bridge and the Sycamore Creek improvements, 4.1 million. The Police Communications Call Center was relocated into the Granada Garage area, and the airport runway pavement rehabilitation. This, they have almost an annual project, but there's significant efforts of work. And facilities replacement and refurbishments that happen each year are a significant effort as well. These are items like replacing roofs, the larger ticket items, replacement of roofs, flooring, changing lighting to more efficient lighting in ball fields, that kind of thing that, that is coordinated by our facilities department. Some pictures of some of the infrastructure's improvements. The Punta Gorda Street Bridge replacement, the recommissioned hydroelectric plant that will produce 200,000 kilowatt, or kilowatts in electricity annually, with, of course, given adequate rain. We are, we're counting on El Nino, come on. The slurry seal on Garden Street, this is before and after, really, you can see the difference that it makes. And we also have new initiatives, policies, and program enhancements there. Many objectives focused on new, oftentimes, they're the project objectives. And these are objectives that enable programs to put a stake in the sand and say, "We want to make this improvement this year," or "We want to make an effort to, to do this." You'll be hearing more about the food waste program, next item on the agenda, and so we will hear how they were able to increase the amount of food waste sent, or removed from the landfill, sent to be composted. The financial transparency efforts, we have, there's a Budget at a Glance brochure that was just done this year, again, to help the public understand that our budget in more layperson's terms. And the budget at a gla, or the Open Gov online tool is one that we have had over, over 8,000, almost 9,000 page views. That's just under 1,000 different people who have actually come to the site again and again to check on information through our Open Gov online tool. That's just in the first year of operation. The electronic patient care reporting, the EPCR. The fire department has initiated this new technology and has these tough books out in the field where they're able to start right away with the patient information into a database that then gets immediately electronically transferred to the hospitals, and that is a new initiative that they've trained for and implemented out in the field. And of course, the, there's always the effort, as any business has, of keeping up with the required and mandated compliance issues. The Federal Aviation Administration, the Transportation Security Administration, wastewater discharge limits, stormwater management, air emissions, all of these things, fuel safety inspections, all of these things happen on a regular basis, and we have staff that keeps us in compliance. We have, performance objectives not met give us an opportunity to implement continuous improvements, because we can identify things that didn't work. And looking at all of the different objectives that were not met, I boiled it down into four main reasons. I look, I see often cropping up the reason for staffing issues, that there's either workload increases, illnesses, injuries, or difficulties in recruitment. There are technology changes. Rolling out our finance, new financial system really made us take a look at the regular work and set some aside, and defer some work in order to roll out some new changes. There are dependencies on other projects. Planned projects often depend on a completion of another task, so things that get set aside for one priority may impact other ones. There's a little domino effect there. And priority shifts. Obviously, things like the drought or extended fire season can immediately, you know, give us the immediate need to shift our priorities. And, you know, an example of that would be in the water treatment and distribution areas, when there, have a certain number of preventive maintenance to get to, you know, it's difficult to get to all the meter replacements that they had planned, or it's difficult to get out there and do all the, you know, valve testing that they might have planned when they're doing other duties, other priorities for the drought, for drought purposes. So those are just examples. So those are just examples of the kinds of reasons that I saw in the program objectives not met. And I'd like to ask if there, I'm going to move on from our P3 performance objectives into some management indicators, and wonder if you have any overall questions on the P3 program? Okay? All right. So moving on to management indicators, these are just an additional set of management data that managers can use to help them understand the nature of their workers, or the nature of the work availability. So this information is provided to managers. It's actually provided now, it used to be provided on a monthly basis, there's a monthly reminder, but this is, we now have a new system where they are able to access this online at any time. They can look up the use of sick leave, lost hours due to injury, preventable vehicle collisions. These are the kinds of things they can look up readily. So total hours of sick leave used by fiscal year, this is over several years, as you can see. And the numbers that are along in yellow there, those are per employee averages. So you can see that, you know, the numbers go up and down, and when you look at the per employee average, you can see that we have, we are trending down as well in that. This is total hours of sick leave used, which is, I think it's a, just an indicator, a planning indicator for managers to be able to predict, you know, what kind of availability do I have in the future? That's one way it's used.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Wong, so this is, I assume this is broken down by department, you should have cumulatively here, because it seems to me the indicators would be more valuable in terms of, from a management tool, since the jobs vary so widely.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Rouse, the, there is more detailed reporting provided to each department and to Mr. Casey, and this is just rolled up to the whole city level.
And this includes hourly's as well, or strictly?
No, this does not include hourly's. There is a separate report now that makes that information available.
Yeah, with the new sick leave laws and whatnot, I was just kind of curious how that changed year over year to the.
Yeah, it previously was not available, but now it will be in the future.
Thank you.
Quick question, I didn't understand on that last graph, was the yellow, no, was the yellow, is that average per employee, full-time employee?
That is correct.
Thank you.
These are the total hours lost due to injuries. So every year, there are, the number of injuries is along that bottom line there, that line that I inserted in there, but the total hours lost due to injury are dependent, of course, on the nature of the injuries. And I would say that most of the hours are in our public safety units, being that they are out there incurring more risk. And so we have 31,000 lost hours plus this fiscal year. And that is definitely higher than some of the past years, and each department gets their own breakdown and works individually with the individuals in their department and their managers.
Ms. Wong, as you look at that chart, it seems extremely volatile for something that you would think would be kind of more or less the same every year, right? I mean, accidents.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Francisco, there are variabilities, variables, I should say, in this report that you have to take into account. One being, people who are assigned to modified duty can take those numbers down because the hours lost due to injury then are no longer 100 percent lost, they may be, you know, 50 percent lost, whatever. Sometimes the nature of the injuries does not allow the workers to go back to work on modified duty. So it really depends on what the injuries are, what their assignments, task assignments are. So each year, those variables occur.
And Madam Mayor and Councilmember Francisco, if you look down at the bottom of the chart, it has the actual number of injuries per year. And over the last five to seven years, it's fairly consistent. What's changed is the severity of the injuries and how many lost hours. And we've just had a bad run of luck the last couple of years where you've had a number of staff who've been out on extended injury time. And so I think the stability that you would expect to see is more kind of in that number of injuries. That's just kind of the regular churn, you always try to do better, but it's kind of the regular expectation you might have. It's the inability to bring some of those injuries back to modified duty, or the severity of the injuries that you see on the bar chart that's increased in the last couple of years.
Okay. It just seems that, well, for instance, I mean, if you compare that lowest year fiscal 10 to fiscal 15, there were actually more injuries, but there's two and a half times as many lost hours in 15.
Exactly. And part of that, you know, in about 2010 is when we really started bringing this modified work duty back. If we can get them back in doing a desk job or some other job, we did that. And so you saw that real benefit in 2010. We've just had injuries, especially in public safety, where there aren't as many modified duty opportunities for those personnel to get them back in.
Okay, thank you.
This is total number of vehicle incidents, and also down on the midline there, the value of claims paid in thousands. This is, of these 97 accidents that happened this year, 54 percent of them were preventable. Actually, there were 91 that reported in, and 54 percent of those were preventable accidents. So this is an opportunity, again, for managers to pinpoint those accidents that were preventable and go circle back and do training with their staff to prevent vehicle accidents. So that was the, that concludes the management indicator part of the report, and we're moving on to comparative indicators. These are the same cities in the survey that we've been doing, as Ms. Johnson said, for over a decade. And these are in order of population, the cities list. There are many of these slides, and you've seen these a few times. So there are some that I will highlight that where we have some significant change from past years, but most of them, I would say on the whole, Santa Barbara has remained almost in the same position in ranking on a lot of these indicators. So I will be moving rather rapidly through these. Obviously, the population hasn't varied that much. Santa Barbara is more stable than some of the other cities. Population density, same thing, very stable across the board. The population characteristics is a slight difference here, the percent population over 65. This year, the median was 16. Last year, it was 14 percent. So, you know, just a slight variability. You know, the statistics in the surveys too, the American Community Survey, a 2 percent difference or a swing is not a huge swing. You know, this, it really has inherent variability, the data itself does. The percent population of 17 and under, we are still very close to the median as we were last year. The educational attainment, we saw some, a big difference here. The median this year was 70 percent who have a bachelor's degree or more. That's very much up from last year, it was 51 percent. And just in looking at the areas where this is and the data, I suspect, though I can't really conclude this without looking further, I suspect that the long unemployment after the 2008 recession probably had the impact of sending more people back to school. And that would be my educated guess on that one, as to why we see such a big change. I mean, there could be other reasons as well, but I think that's one of the big factors. But Santa Barbara also went from about 50 percent up to 62 percent. So median household income also changed somewhat. We were closer to the median, we actually dropped, whereas the median over the rest of the cities actually rose. So Santa Barbara's median household income did experience a decrease where the median of the rest of the cities actually went up. So that was something that I noted as a change of interest. The percent household income under 25,000, it actually went up in many of the communities, but not significantly. This is very similar profile to last year, it just, I think, went up slightly. The percent household income greater than 150,000 did not change much in Santa Barbara, but it did change more significantly in some of the southern beach areas and in Sunnyvale. There are, the communities where it went up are Redondo Beach, for example, and Sunnyvale, for example, and Ventura actually went up. So there are a few different communities that experienced a growth in the percent household income. The percent owner-occupied housing, again, this is one of the areas where we are not close to the median, and we continue to, that continues to be a challenge in our community. Looking at the adopted budgets, in this whole section, I saw very little change in rank or position, or, and not a whole lot of change other than in the per capita figures that I will be showing. Because other cities had a little bit more population growth than we did, that, you know, that has an impact on the per capita information. So looking at the full-time equivalents, this is almost an identical picture to last year in terms of the number of FTEs per 1,000 population. The general fund revenue per capita, we did see a change there, where we increased, we changed in rank a little bit. Santa Cruz dropped a little bit, we went up a little bit, and so our general revenue per capita went up. But that, again, could be attributed to the fact that other communities are experiencing more population growth than we are. So projected sales tax per capita, pardon me just a moment, open this up, I have some notes on some of these. You can see that this really, the picture hasn't changed a whole lot. I noticed that even though the numbers went up slightly, everybody increased almost across the board, the rank did not change. The assessed value of taxable property per capita, this is, this is information that comes out of the state, and they are looking at all the counties. And across the board, the median rose by a little, and Santa Barbara rose by quite a bit. So the median went up a little more slowly than Santa Barbara did. So our assessed value went up. The projected property tax per capita, this was one of the areas that we did not see the kind of growth, we saw almost decreases in some cities rather than a growth. Almost all the taxes grew except for this one. And the median did go up just slightly, but, and Santa Barbara went up slightly, but it's very little increase, and some of the other cities decreased.
There are a lot of flip-flopping in housing in Newport Beach, I mean, why?
You know, it's interesting. I think Newport Beach has very high real estate values, and they have also very correspondingly high income.
But this is the transfer tax, right? This is when, am I understanding?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this would be both the projected property and property transfer tax, but the property transfer tax is a very small percentage of this number.
All right, okay.
Madam Mayor, isn't there also, I think in Newport Beach, a good deal of new development? It's a new city, and so one of the reasons that it's, it just, it doesn't have the implications of Prop 13 as we do.
The projected general fund transient occupancy tax, you can see, you can see which cities have a lot of tourism as an industry, because those are the ones where you saw the most increases, the most growth. I have, excuse me, here it is. Santa Barbara increased from 195,000 to 216, oh, excuse me, 216 per capita, 216 dollars per capita, not thousand. And the median rose from 70 to 73. The projected business life tax per capita, this is an area that we saw some variability here as well. And although there was moderate growth in the median, Santa Barbara increased just slightly as well, not a lot of, and it's hard to see what's going on when you have Santa Monica being so out of league with the rest of us.
Well, just to underline the point that people always ask us, why can't you do all these extra programs that Santa Monica does? And that's why.
That is, Madam Mayor.
A big reason why.
If you look at every revenue source, Santa Monica has been exponentially higher on every revenue source, not just on this one.
The projected general fund utility users tax, not every city has this tax, so there's a reduced number of cities in this pool, but again, very little change from last year. Differences in rates, but still very little change in the amount of income. So we're moving on to public safety. The police expense as a percent of the general fund, this is very similar, very little change to last year. Santa Barbara is exactly at the median. The authorized police officers per thousand residents, last year, the median was very similar, it was 134 instead of 133. And last year, Santa Barbara was 157 and 156, very similar. We keep, it stayed steady for a long time. The Part I crimes per thousand population, this is information that I get from the California Department of Justice, because they have this particular pool of cities in their records, and it's, I know that the information is gathered in the same way. So in comparing this, we have, we have, actually, the median and Santa Barbara dropped, the median dropped from 31 to 28. This is Part I crimes per thousand population, and Santa Barbara dropped from 35 to 29, or 35.5 to 29.5. It's just dropped by four. And that's actually significant when you're looking at the population per thousand crimes, it's a good trend. The part, excuse me.
Finish your sentence, go ahead.
No, no, that was it.
No, I mean, part of this is not just to look at each slide, but to make comparisons among the slides. So if you look at the previous slide, if you put that one up, that shows the number of police officers per thousand residents, and for example, Santa Monica, again, 2.38 police officers per thousand residents. Santa Barbara, 1.56. And then you go to the next one, and yet Santa Monica still has a higher number of Part I crimes per thousand. You know, so, I mean, you hear, people can do a lot of things with statistics, but one of the things we kind of hear is the more officers equals less crime, and that's not necessarily true. There's lots of factors towards it, and here's an example of something. So, and they're both, they're both tourist attracted areas, they're both, Santa Monica's much more densely populated, you know, so part of what I like to see in these slides is not just the static slide, but what does it really mean, and how do they interact with each other? So that's part, that's helpful when you can extrapolate that information.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The fire operating expenditure as a percent of the general fund, this is, again, we're looking at Santa Barbara being almost at the median, and many other cities as well. I mean, these are very closely structured here. You'll see that Santa Monica is the outlier, again, in the opposite direction, because their general fund is so large comparatively, they have, their fire operating expenses The authorized fire personnel per thousand residents, again, you have a median that is not changing a whole lot, the profile is about the same as it was last The profile is about the same as it was last year. Very similar. Fire emergency responses are actually overall fewer, just slightly, compared to last year. And, but there's a corresponding rise in medical emergency responses. So we have probably a steady growth of the number of incidents that fire personnel respond to as well as police personnel. So, see, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, so, this one, I'm, one of the, kind of getting back to the mayor's point about Santa Monica, the number of police officers and whatnot, but they're also butted up right next to a major urban area. I mean, wouldn't that, I mean, that's, it's kind of hard to, you know, even though we're about the same size as Santa Monica and we are a coastal city, I mean, they're right next to some very densely populated urban areas. So it's kind of hard to compare those stats and make them apples and apples, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Rouse, that is one of the reasons I do hesitate to guess. I mean, I can look at the information, I can take some educated guesses, but there are so many variables in this data that to do a real true comparison is, it's difficult. It's difficult to draw concrete conclusions. I think it's like, Madam Mayor, like you said, it's beneficial to look at the big picture. You know, what are we seeing in the big picture here? And I think that's the value of doing this exercise every year, is to see, to just ensure that Santa Barbara is staying where it has been or in close to the median in this group, this pool of like cities is important to see.
I guess I just extrapolate when we talk about some of our transit issues and whatnot, and yet this is kind of isolated coastal village compared to where they sit. So it's kind of, it's hard to compare.
It is difficult to compare.
Thank you.
So, general services. Just a few left here. We have the library operating budget per city population. Santa Barbara, again, is at the median. And the, it's interesting to see that some, I did note that a few cities were moving away from funding their, how they're funding their libraries. They're funding, funding them slightly differently. And so some of the cities that were on this list before have dropped out because we're looking at a couple of cities that have gone to other means of operating their libraries. The developed park acreage per thousand population has not changed that much in, over the years, but what stands out here is that Santa Barbara last year was the highest, but Oceanside and Newport Beach both had an increase in park, parkland added, park acreage added to both of their communities.
Did they annex new parkland? Or that means, so they made their city bigger? Or did they, how does one do that?
I don't know. I could find out for you, Madam Mayor. I can look that up. I don't know if they annexed new land or if they just changed land that they had into parks.
I'm not sure, Madam Mayor, about Oceanside, but I know Newport Beach has done major annexation down the coast. That whole Newport coast area, as you head towards Laguna, they've been annexing over the years. And so that might have provided them with some open space that's been able to develop into parkland.
And they annexed it to be parkland forever? Or they annexed it to be part of the city that that might change over time?
They've annexed large areas. That's included primarily residential and commercial development, but I imagine it included some open space that allowed them to develop some parkland as well.
The pavement condition index. Again, this is another comparative indicator that's difficult to compare because there are different software tools that are being used here from, they're not all using the same tool and therefore it doesn't all return the same results. The eye chart key there is that the blue color up at the top is excellent and so on, very good down to very poor down below. The colors don't correspond to the colors on the, on this chart. I'd use the same color scheme, so I didn't want to mislead you there. The numbers are what correspond. So not looking at the colors, but looking at the numbers, we have, most of the cities above the median line are going to be very good or, and there are no excellence. So they're all in the very good category. Everybody below the median line is going to be pretty much in the good to, yeah, just in the good category. Nobody's in fair, poor, or very poor. So we have good below the median and very good above the median. But we have, I think it continues, you can see the cities that were, that have challenges, us included, in the four that are in the 50s and 60s range.
Yeah, but what, 10 years ago, we were at 70, right?
That is true. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, it is definitely going down. And others, Carlsbad, for example, continues to go up. There are, number of centerline miles of street maintained is a good, another good partner indicator to look at with the pavement index. You can see who's looking at, you know, what amount of streets are being maintained. And we are just below the median, so looking.
Is this just an alternative measurement tool?
This is not a measurement tool. This is just simply to look at the quantity of streets maintained. This is the tool that measures the condition. And this is just the number of miles being maintained.
Mr. Hart?
So this, this combination of slides, the previous one and this one, is very interesting because we have two cities that are kind of partners to our Santa Maria and Ventura. Santa Maria has the same sales tax measure that we have. Ventura doesn't have a sales tax measure. They have a better pavement. Both those cities have better pavement indexes than us, and both have significantly more centerline miles to maintain. So not only do they have a bigger job, but they're doing a better job than we are with a bigger job.
You know, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hart, I would, I would just want to say, I'm not sure I would say better job. I think we'll be back to you in January or February and talk about all the things we try to do with our streets monies that I don't think the other jurisdictions do. We fund a lot of transit service. I think the other cities put it all into street maintenance.
Right. I think that's right.
And there's other things like that. So that we've made policy choices that have not allowed us to put as much money into streets maintenance that maybe other jurisdictions haven't.
Right. This is the measure, this is only one measure of what we're investing dollars. I agree. But this is an important measure, and this is probably something that most citizens are very concerned about, too.
Well, and that's right, Santa Maria being a perfect example, right? They put all of their money in street maintenance. I think we also do our street tree, street trees are a lot, you saw our streets money.
Trees, graffiti removal, there are a number of things we do.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Which are all good. I mean, they're all good customer service things that we're doing with our streets money. It's just spread very thin.
Thank you. And just end on this note of taking a look at our lovely coastline and just say that the, doing an annual report does give us the opportunity to focus on, you know, what we are doing well and what we need to improve on. So I really appreciate your attention to this. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any speaker slips on this. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on to item number 15. Food scraps composting partnership with downtown Santa Barbara. Great. Mr. For, whenever you're ready.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Matt For, Environmental Services Manager. I'm here, I'm thrilled to be here to talk about a new partnership with downtown Santa Barbara that city staff has undertaken in the last year. And this will be a three-part presentation. We are going to move fast, so don't worry, we won't keep you here for an hour. I'm going to start and introduce the item. We'll then hand it over to Mr. Bob Engel with Engel and Gray Composting. He's been the city's contracted composter for the last six years. And then we will end up with Ms. Maggie Campbell from downtown Santa Barbara to talk about the result and how downtown Santa Barbara is really closing the loop on the organics that their members generate. So the value of this partnership really is evident when we look at some background and some context. Just to take you back to, briefly to 2008, the city embarked on a pilot program to begin collecting source separated food scraps in the business sector. And we did that because in 2008, the business sector diversion rate had remained stagnant at about 22% and had not moved for a number of years. And when we looked, we, at the same time, did a waste composition study, and we found that about 30% of the, of all of the trash that we sent to Tahigus landfill was comprised of food scraps and contaminated paper, both that are biodegradable. Landfilled organics, they use valuable airspace, which is precious, especially at Tahigus on the central coast. And as they break down under anaerobic conditions, they generate methane, which goes into the environment. By taking organic material out of the trash, we're doing two things. First, the recovery of recyclable material improves because we don't have recyclable material that is smeared with food. And the value of those materials that we send to market dramatically increases. And the final point is that composting fees are about $30 a ton lower than equivalent tipping fees at Tahigus landfill. So there are a number of reasons why we embarked on this program.
Mr. Francisco.
Mr. For, so I assume organic material includes green waste?
It does, yes.
And what proportion of the organic material you're talking about is green waste?
Virtually none. We do a very good job of getting our green waste out of the trash through source separated service through all of our sectors. There's very little green waste left in the trash that we're sending to Tahigus.
Right, right, right. I guess what I'm asking is the total waste stream. So would, would green waste, is that compostable or not?
Green waste is indeed compostable.
And are we doing that now?
We are not doing that now. Currently, our, we've sent about 13,000 tons of green waste to the county, and they convert it into mulch that's then given away to residents and businesses around the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. So what happens to the food scraps? Marbork collects it, and I have to say, in, over the last six or seven years, Marbork has done a phenomenal job of working with the city to help us work through these, these collection issues. The food scraps are then transferred at the South Coast Transfer Station, at the county's facility, and then delivered to Engel and Gray Composting in Santa Maria. And as I said, Mr. Engel has been with the city since 2008. He'll talk a little bit more about what he does, but essentially, he converts the food scraps into compost, market grade compost, and then applies them to various venues. So our progress to date, as I said, we've been doing this since 2008 as a pilot, 2009, actually November of 2009, on a sector-wide basis. And there are about 500 food generating businesses and schools in the city. The reason why we hooked up and we approached the downtown Santa Barbara is about 150 of those 500 food generating businesses are members of downtown Santa Barbara. And currently, we only have about 53 of them subscribe to food scrap service. We have about 215 of total customers. So we have about 285 customers left to, to get onboard, of which about 100, again, are downtown Santa Barbara members. So we wanted to work strategically and cooperatively with them. Diversion, setting up diversion programs, including food scrap collection in the downtown area, is difficult. We have very small lot spaces, we have small enclosure spaces, we have, and, big problems with trespassing of people using waste enclosures on an unauthorized basis. Currently, we don't provide Sunday service, and that can be problematic for food generating facilities who generate the bulk of their waste between Friday night and Sunday night. There are safety issues where Marbork can only collect at certain unpopulated times of the day. And we have, in many times, multiple customers that are sharing waste containers. In addition to helping us surmount these obstacles, which the, which downtown Santa Barbara has helped us do, the added value of this partnership is they have helped us get to the right decision maker and get to a decision and a collection program more, more quickly. So just to give you a real quick idea of some of the space constraints, sometimes we build enclosures, many times we don't have them that are big enough, and they're used up by all sorts of things. Grease containers and linen carts. Sometimes we can solve them. In this case, the city has begun, with Marbork's help, deploying split containers. This is a combo trash and recycling container that serves Opal and Arlington Theater. Other times, those aren't workable, where the lids have to stay closed in the case of a split container, where we have trespassing and the owner has to put a fence over the containers, it just doesn't work out. We have large generators that are sharing a lot of space. This particular enclosure serves about nine or 12 different customers, and it gets very complicated to, to make that all work. We have found that there's an inverse relationship between the power of a decision making, of a decision maker at a business and their availability. So one of the things that downtown Santa Barbara has helped city staff do is get to a decision maker who can make decisions about the trash bill and make decisions about business practices that will then allow us to implement various diversion programs. So, how did this all happen? Ms. Campbell was nice enough to work with us beginning about a year ago to recruit new members. She made it very clear that food scrap collection aligns with the organization's broader sustainability goals. They mailed flyers to their members, they did outreach to their members on our behalf. In many cases, they paired us with specific decision making, decision makers, and they encouraged their members to help surmount some of those obstacles and challenges that we talked about earlier. What has the result been? We, the 215 customers that we have onboarded thus far, I would call the low-hanging fruit. Those were the easiest ones to get onboard. The 285 that we have left are the most space constrained and posed the most challenges to us. Despite that, with the partnership of downtown Santa Barbara, we've been able to maintain our traditional capture rate of 30%. As a result, we have about 3,100 tons of food scraps that we're diverting from landfill disposal. Overall, the business sector diversion rate has climbed about 12 percentage points, from 22% to 34% over the past six years. And the food scrap collection program represents about 10 percentage points of that overall diversion rate. As I said, by diverting organic material from the landfill, we are no longer generating methane. This supports the city's climate action plan directives. It also sets the city up to comply with new state organic mandates, including the 75% overall diversion goal in AB 341, and, and what is looking to soon be an outright ban on organics from landfill disposal in the coming years. So with that, I'd like to allow Mr. Bob Engel to talk a little bit about how he's helping the city to transform its food scraps into compost. Bob?
The famous Bob.
Thank you, ma'am.
Welcome.
Madam Mayor, fellow councilmembers, I'd like to thank you for being, inviting me here today. Engel and Gray is chasing the arrows. A lot of people don't know what the chasing the arrows are. I'm sure you all do, but it's, it's collection, it's composting, the manufacturing, and the third arrow, and is why we're kind of here, to honor the downtown association for doing the use, the third arrow in the, in the, in the circle. This slide just kind of shows what the biosolids collection, we retake from all the biosolids treatment plants. We've been taking biosolids from the city of Santa Barbara since 2003. We take green waste from all the South San Luis Obispo County, all the North Santa Barbara County, and the city of Santa Maria. We take food waste from, of course, here, the city of Santa Barbara, the Cal Poly, and UCSB. Those are the three main food waste producers we have. We're, we operate on a 40-acre site. Whoops. Can you slow that down a little?
Yeah, it's on its own.
Man, you're got me going fast. He said to go fast, but I can't go that fast. We operate on a, this is an overhead shot of our facility. We welcome any of you that ever come up, if you want to visit. 40-acre site, we're permitted to handle 400,000 yards a year. We're at about 100,000 yards now. We do all organic feedstocks, and you'll see some of those in a minute. We, we're called an open windrow facility. We take all of the organic material. We don't take municipal solid waste, but we take biosolids, green waste, ag waste, that's a load of grape pumice coming from a winery, and we mix all those together to blend into the proper blend, and we then compost them in a thermophilic composting arrangement. Basically, we're, it's a process. We get all the feedstocks, we then compost them, those are pitcher of windrows, and you can see our machines going out the back end of the windrow, and that's releasing the moisture. And then we have a finished curing pile here on the side. The three pitchers make it look easy, but it's not quite that easy, trust me, but it's a process. The biggest thing is that third arrow is getting people to use it. And my hat's off to Mrs. Bjork. When back in 2003, we took biosolids. Her main thing was is to get biosol, compost back here, a whole different product, and we have been doing that since 2003. We sell it here, we have agri chip and glitability materials are dealers for us. We donate it to schools and, and we have all these different uses. If you look at like the Winchester Canyon overpass, we did 3,000 yards of compost there through Caltrans. Caltrans is a big user. Caltrans is a big user of compost. They've found that building healthy soil builds healthy plants, they don't have to go back in and do a lot of work over. This is a little community promotion. The picture on the left is, we were up here on a Saturday doing the food market. We do seminars around, and we come to the wastewater treatment plants, we give landscaping seminars. The next one is, this is a picture, one of my favorite pictures, a few of the council members were here, I think, at Peabody School. We've been sponsoring their garden for probably six years, seven years, maybe longer. We did have a big event there. We have Chef Nathan Lyons, which is a national-known chef, come up, worked with the chef at Peabody. It was a really successful event. We also donated some money to their school garden, and we bring them transplants up from once or twice a year to do it. And I forget the gentleman's name, but he's sitting there on the trailer, he kind of spearheads it, he's a retired teacher there and does a fantastic job. So our whole deal is we like to really thank the Santa Barbara Downtown Association for using some of our compost, like to thank the city of Santa Barbara for composting. And it's all about completing the cycle. We can all recycle, but we got to use the product too, and that's what we're all about.
Mr. Engel, Mr. Rouse has a question.
Mr. Engel, but you said you are permitted to do 400?
100,000 yards.
And you're doing 100,000 right now?
Right.
And are you, so currently doing 100,000, are you able to distribute all the things you produce? Do you have more, you have more capacity to produce? Is there a market for everything you could produce up to 400,000?
Marketing is always a challenge. People say, well, why are you advertising your compost, Bob? And I says, well, you know Coca-Cola, you got to advertise, you got to get people thinking about improving their soil. It's a challenge. We're sold out right now. We got stuff coming out of the windrows, and we're, you know, we're completely sold out. We're having some vineyards that have some orders in, and we just can't get to them in probably in two or three months. And to say, you know, is that going to happen next year or whatever? Hopefully, we've been able to build our markets. When we started back in 1993, I would not have wanted to open and day one have 400,000 yards of material coming out, because we would not have been able to get rid of it. We have to sell our, we sell our material, and it's a process. You got to build the markets and do it, but you got to, hopefully, plan your production to your sales ability.
So there's, I guess my big question is, so there's not really a limit to the amount you could receive in terms of supply from the various agencies? I mean, we could...
Yeah, of course, no, there's not. One of the biggest limiting factors is, is, well, all food waste, or all green waste, or all biosolids. And what the main problem in a composting process is, is to get a little bit of everything. Because, you know, you know the science of it, and I was a business major, so I've had large hurdles to come over the carbon to nitrogen ratios and learn all about that, but you have to mix them at the right ratio to get the nice finished product. And there's, compost is not compost, because compost varies in quality from facility to facility, state to state. We think we make a really good compost, and our ability to go into schools and stuff like that and deliver a product that's quality, they like it.
Well, that was my last question about in terms of the quality of what you would do for an agricultural application versus an urban application, where obviously you couldn't have a lot of offgassing or smells or whatever. How do you, is there a way you formulate that differently, or is it all kind of the same?
Not really. In the feedstocks, it can be different, but our goal is never to, if you buy good compost, you're not going to have a smell. You know, if it's still smelling, it's not really compost yet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Engel. So the last speaker will be Ms. Maggie Campbell with Downtown Santa Barbara, talk about how they're closing the loop on their organics.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Maggie Campbell, the Executive Director for Downtown Santa Barbara. And just a point of history, for those that may not know it, the streetscape that we all call the Plaza, State Street, was first redone in 1969, and then it was redone again in 1998. And the Downtown Organization was first contracted back in 1978, about eight or 10 years after the initial capital project. We were approached and were contracted by the city to provide the personnel management and the daily care and maintenance of the State Street improvements. So we've been doing this day-to-day maintenance on State Street for a long time. And it's the Downtown Santa Barbara crew that puts up and down the holiday decor, it's our maintenance crew that's out there every morning taking care of the plants, the sidewalks, the flag program. We work very closely with the Parks Department, work closely under the guidance of architect Bob Cunningham, who was the designer for the landscaping in the late 90s. And so we're out there every day. We set up and clean up after the parades, the nightlife, the homeless, and everyday customers. That makes downtown Santa Barbara such a dynamic place. And at the core of our concern on today's program, and what we're trying to share with you, is the health and investment in the streetscape, and specifically the landscaping. You know, it's been a tough couple of years with the drought, and in spite of all of the impacts, we're proud to share that we've reduced our water usage over recent years over 30%. And we continue to operate our cleaning priorities with health and safety first. And I today want to introduce Zara Nahar-Moore. She is going to really present to you what we've done with this whole composting and food scrap program, because we are bringing it full circle back to the care of the maintenance and the landscaping. But Zara has been under contract with us since June, working all around the edges of our normal business to identify and advance initiatives and improvements to the pedestrian experience while providing some specific expertise in several core policy areas. This one-year contract for services is fully funded by Downtown Santa Barbara, and it defines several areas of work. And included in the scope was developing and implementing a new approach to the post-Fiesta cleanup and response in preparation for both drought and floods, since that seems to be what we're all preparing for. So with that, I will turn it over to Zara, and I want to thank you for your longstanding confidence and partnership in taking care of the Plaza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. As Ms. Campbell mentioned, I'm serving as an operations consultant to Downtown Santa Barbara, and part of what I'm looking at are ways in which Downtown Santa Barbara can make sensible investments to support and improve that user experience on State Street. And of course, the landscape and the surrounding environment are an important aspect of that. So as you can imagine, certain challenges present themselves with respect to maintaining a clean environment and healthy plants on State Street due to the drought and the impacts that are attendant to a dense urban area. So every year, if you could advance, every year, the impacts of Fiesta in particular are very significant, and that's due to the increased volume of pedestrian traffic in the area and a proliferation of cigarette butts and confetti in the plant beds. During severe droughts like the one that we're in, the plants are already under major strain, and the impacts of Fiesta unfortunately exacerbate that strain. So for the first time this year, in addition to overseeing a deep clean on the downtown sidewalks, after Fiesta, Downtown Santa Barbara's maintenance crew went through an extensive process to rake the confetti from the plant beds and to remove dead plant material to begin preparing the plant beds to be refreshed with the goal of enhancing the plant's ability to thrive through the drought and the anticipated El Nino rains that we hope are coming this winter. So you've heard from Mr. Forre and Mr. Engel, the process that Engel and Gray undertakes to transform food scraps into compost, thanks to their contribution, for which we're very grateful, and also collaboration through the Parks Department and Arcadia Studios with Bob Cunningham. Downtown Santa Barbara was able to use some of that compost mixed with soil to apply to the plant beds and create a healthy environment for new hardy drought-tolerant plant species to go in. And Mr. Forre, if you'll advance a couple of slides, we have some pictures. So this again is the impacts of Fiesta that you see, the huge volume of confetti in the plant beds that the Downtown Santa Barbara maintenance crew raked out. There's just a little sort of cyclical representation of what happens when the food waste is generated, collected through the food scraps program, transformed into compost, introduced in the plant beds, and then ultimately nourishes that plant material to hopefully increase the longevity and the healthiness of the plant. So on the right is a photo of a plant bed where the compost has been applied. And right now, Downtown Santa Barbara's maintenance crew is in the process of introducing that new plant material. It began last week and will be completed by the end of this week. And Mr. Forre, if you'll move forward. So you see again where the compost has been applied, and then a few, the next slide is a few of the plants that have gone in. So they're baby plants, they will grow and be more lush and full in the landscaping. And just finally, the last slide, a quick word about the time and resources dedicated to this. I want to note that Downtown Santa Barbara has done this additional work of cleaning out the plant beds very thoroughly within the confines of the existing Plaza contract budget, with the perspective that this is a really important investment in the overall downtown landscape, and that it's important to be responsive to the environmental realities in a thoughtful way that allows for healthy plants with minimal water usage. Is there any questions?
Mr. Hart?
Well, just want to say thank you for doing that great work. It's something that's been needed for a while, and your extra care and attention is appreciated at this point. Was Mr. Cunningham consulted about the plant palette and everything, or is that using his original plan and just replacing plants? How does that work?
Yes, Bob has been a great advisor to us. We actually participate with the city Parks Department and conduct quarterly walks on the street. And we have asked Bob to participate in a couple of those walks, and so the plant list that he's giving us is supplemental to his original design. We've had some of the plants that were part of the original design haven't made it. And so our call to him was a more drought-tolerant plan, and he's given us some specific recommendations, and our crew's in the process of buying and installing that now.
Great, well, thank you again for a lot of work.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, at the risk of spouting blasphemy, is there, Mr. Forre, a, if there were a single source of material that could be made into confetti, is there something out there that's compostable, that's something that would be, that could be used, that wouldn't be as much of a burden on both our planting as well as our, you know, our marine environment? I know this is a bigger-picture question, obviously, but, you know, say, for example, we have the ability to single-source that, is there something out there that could be used, that could be an alternative to what the downtown has to clean up every year in terms of, because I know there's plastic, there's colored paper, there's dyes, there's things that probably shouldn't really be on our streets, so...
Madam Mayor, Councilman Rouse, I've never had to research that. On the top of my head, I would think something like bird seed. I don't know how that would fare in the aquatic environment, but I know that for similar applications, you know, like weddings and other celebrations, bird seed is often a go-to. It's biodegradable, it doesn't harm animals and things. I could do some research for you and come back. I'd have to look into that.
Madam Mayor, council members, we've looked at this in years past. There are different fill materials and cascarones that you can look at. It's very hard to regulate, very, very hard.
You do have a public comment speaker slip. Ethan David Shankman?
Thank you for a great presentation, Mr. Forre. I have a question surrounding Marborg's collection of trash, debris, anything that needs to be recycled for, that's relevant to the Downtown Organization. Many of us get our day early here in the morning. I would say probably God, 6 o'clock could be sleeping in. And we know that coffeehouses, restaurants, other places that are in a commercial district is offering service at this time. And yet, Marborg is putting out, as you had mentioned, you know, a stench in collecting this receptacle to people who would otherwise be able to enjoy their breakfast and be productive throughout the day. This is in a commercial industrial district in the Downtown Organization, and would thoroughly recommend that, that you start a little earlier. I would say probably before, you know, have downtown vicinity collected before 6:00 a.m. in the morning, when your earliest coffeehouse, let's see, who opens at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning? Because it's impacting and burdening against business, and it's not pleasant. Okay, thanks, Maggie Campbell. Appreciate you noticing. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. This doesn't require any motion or anything. I do want to ask the kind of longer-term question. First off, this is a great program, it makes a lot of sense. I've heard other things about, you know, the Bay Area composting, going to the vineyards and Napa and, you know, various things like that. And so this is our mini version of that. We are looking long-term at Taheguis and the anaerobic digester facility, and the county doesn't do food scraps as we do, and there's always been that kind of question of what happens. And in terms of Engel and Gray having usually only, I guess it's only 25% of your permitted capacity right now, and so it can grow. Just trying to see how those pieces fit together with the Taheguis. And what, you know, I know we're going to have an update soon, we keep hearing there's going to be an update, but things get delayed, but just kind of want to put that in context into the future about what's happening with composting in general and food scraps and Taheguis.
Madam Mayor, council members, they certainly align with each other. And one of the, one of the projects that Environmental Services staff is working on is, as you know, developing what our tonnage commitments would be to a resource recovery project if we, if we get there. And so what we know now is that we have enough anaerobic digestion capacity to take what we believe is build-out in the business sector. We think our upper limit of organics tonnage is about 5,800 tons. We have that capacity in the anaerobic digester. Certainly, taking the organics out will improve the quality and the capture of the recyclable material. So this program will continue to align with the goals and objectives of the Resource Recovery Project. We have talked, you know, I've mentioned to this council before, the idea of things like in the residential sector, co-collecting green waste and food waste together. That's still something that we're looking at. As, as part of the technical evaluation of the material recovery facility, for example, we asked the consultant that the county recently commissioned a study with to look at the ability of the MRF equipment to continue to capture recyclables given a changing waste stream, or even if we were to change how we package materials at the curb. So I don't have any definitive answers yet, but I can assure you, we're looking at all those variables, and we'll make sure that what we collect at the curb aligns with the Resource Recovery Project.
Okay. And do you have an update of when the next update's going to be?
I'm going, it will likely be sometime this winter, you know, probably just January.
Meaning early 2016?
January.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Hart?
I guess I have some...
I have some more questions for Mr. Engel. Just could you give me kind of a sense as to how much quantities we're shipping in the way of biosolids and food waste versus returning back in terms of tonnage of, I imagine there's massive loss of moisture, and so the volume shrinks at the end of the system. But just to order of magnitude, are we sending a lot more material to you than we're taking back, or are we kind of in balance?
To be honest, I don't have those exact numbers, but to give you a feel for it, you know, we don't bring back right into the city of Santa Barbara jurisdiction. I would, I would guess maybe 20, 30% of what you generate. Our larger volume users are Caltrans and ag agriculture. And then, then you have all the landscaping and bigger projects. And, you know, we've top-dressed parks here, we've top-dressed Santa Barbara High Schools' facilities with the lawns and stuff, and that all contributes to water savings too. But yeah, I don't, I, it would take a little bit of really number crunching, but you are right, there is a loss of moisture, a loss of volume, loss of weight in the composting process, because what you get out isn't anything like what you put in.
Right. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Oh, great. It's a great project and a good partnership, so thank you all for being a part of it. We have a 4 o'clock session for the next round of interviews, so we will recess until then.
We are in the process of doing interviews for members of the city advisory committees, and we have a number of people here who'd like to be interviewed. We will also have another opportunity for folks to interview on November 16th at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. So I will call each of the individual committees in alphabetical order. So when you hear the name of the committee that you are applying to, come on up, and you can just kind of sort yourselves out if there are multiple people who are here to apply for a specific, the same committee. If you also are applying for multiple committees, you can go ahead and take this opportunity to speak to your interest and qualifications for whatever that committee is. And take your time, just give us a little bit of information about yourself and why you're interested in serving. We do have all of your applications here with us in writing, so you don't have to repeat everything in there. But with that, let's begin with the access advisory committee. Is there anyone here that would like to apply for that committee? Is there anyone here that would like to apply for that committee? How about the Architectural Board of Review? Okay, the Arts Advisory Committee? The Civil Service Commission? Community Development and Human Services Committee? The Community Events and Festivals Committee? Good, thank you. I was starting to wonder there, I was at the right place.
Good day to you all. My name is Barry Dorsey and I am currently on the Community Events and Festivals Committee and I'm reapplying for the position at the end of December. I'm currently the General Manager at the Hotel Milo in Santa Barbara and my previous position that was Director of Room to Corinna, so I've been up.
In Santa Barbara about five months? Oh, thank you, sir.
Sorry about that, that was my error.
I've been in the area about five months now and prior to coming up here, I served on the Board of the San Diego County Hotel and Motel Association and I'm currently a member of the Board of the Visit Santa Barbara and the Greater Santa Barbara Restaurant and Lodging Association. So appreciate your support and hope to serve well.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Thank you for your service. Are there any questions for Mr. Dorsey? All right, thank you again.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else for the Community Events and Festivals Committee? The Creeks Advisory Committee? Mr. Muldever?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'm Lee Muldever, I'm seeking reappointment. I think I have a slight advantage because the Chair is our current liaison, Councilwoman Hotchkiss was our previous liaison and I remember when the committee was getting started that Councilwoman Maria was heavily involved in it. I've completed my term, I'm really impressed with what they're doing. I think the council knows how well they leverage grant money and outside funds to actual city funds, they spend them very, very carefully. The staff has built up a terrific track record of success. They're planning with your concurrence, more great things for the next three or four years, probably not a land acquisition, but other good things. And I think that the eight people who serve on the staff are just absolutely stellar. They're devoted to community service and it's an honor and a privilege to be there each month to try to see what they're doing and encourage their great work.
Thank you, Mr. Muldever. And then you probably won't have another Veronica Meadows to look forward to in the next term, but that was quite a success story.
Well, it was expensive, but it was, it was serendipity and I, I want to thank again the previous owners for agreeing to go into the process because, as you know, some people go through the process and they leave it with such a bad taste that they just walk away. And I think it was great that the city and the nonprofits left the door open and were able to engage in that dialogue which ended so well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Lee? Thank you for your service. The Downtown Parking Committee?
I have my application on that, Protem, but it's.
Mr. Shankman, if you want to talk, you're going to have to come up to the microphone. You can't just speak from the audience.
I would like to do my interview and I understand it was not the 16th, but the 17th at 6:00 p.m. Can we verify that because I believe you said the 16th?
I think, either way, it's the 17th.
The 17th, okay. So I'd like to do my interview at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The Fire and Police Commission? The Fire and Police Pension Commission? The Harbor Commission? Historic Landmarks Commission? We should have started from the back of the alphabet, obviously. The County of Santa Barbara Library Advisory Committee? Ms. Saley?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. My name is Pat Saley. I'm a longtime Santa Barbara resident, new downtown resident as of a week ago.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I'm here to talk to you about the camp, being the city's rep on the county's Library Advisory Committee. That position has been vacant for a year. I don't know if that should give me pause or not, but regardless, I am now the Board President of the Friends of the Montecito Library and I've been on that board for five years. I have attended two of the Library Advisory Committee meetings. They meet quarterly, it's not that much of a burden, but libraries are in quite a financial struggle. The state pulled out money, I think it was 2010. The Board of Supervisors did increase the per capita funding for libraries throughout the county by $1 this last year, but Santa Barbara County is still in the bottom 10% in terms of per capita funding. And then while the library I've, board I've been on is in Montecito, the density around there is so low, they don't get much money from the county and they don't have a city to go to. Carpinteria, Solvang, Buellton, they get tens of thousands of dollars from their local city, Galita, and Montecito doesn't have that, but it's not a problem unique to Montecito. There are other libraries in the county, there are libraries that pay quite high rents. There are a lot of funding issues and I think I have a pretty good grasp of those and I would like to help them solve some of those problems because I just think libraries are so important to our community.
Well, thank you for your commitment to libraries. It's going to be great having that overlap between the Montecito and the county. Any other questions for Ms. Saley?
I'd like to make a comment to her, if I may. I'm the city's liaison to the, the council's liaison to the library board and we're inviting everybody who has something to do with the different libraries to attend our monthly meetings. So I'll send you an invitation because there's the Library Foundation that's raising money for the children's library and so we've, we've found that if we get everyone in the same room every once in a while, we can advocate for libraries and they're my, one of my favorite things on the planet too, so.
Yeah, I'd be happy to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saley. The Library Board itself, okay. The Living Wage Advisory Committee? The Measure P Committee? Neighborhood Advisory Council? Parks and Recreation Commission? I know we have two Planning Commissioners here, so, Planning Commission? Mr. Thompson, thank you.
If you go long enough, you get hit.
Yes, exactly.
Council, good afternoon. For the record, I'm Addison Thompson. As you know, I'm currently serving on the Planning Commission and I'd like to continue because we have several projects going on that are fairly substantial and I'd really like to see them through to completion. The new zoning ordinance, which is woefully in need of update and we hope to be finished with that to bring it to you next year. Local coastal program also in need of updates so that we can implement the general plan in the coastal zone and also the Coastal Commission has told us they won't take any more amendments to it, so we are in the process of a total redo of the local coastal program. And of course, the AUD program, like to see that through our trial period. And then, of course, there's always Highway 101. So I'm involved with quite a few interesting programs that I'd like to see through to completion and that's why I'd like to continue on for another term. So if it's your will, I'll do it.
Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Thank you very much for your service.
I don't have a question, I just wanted to thank you for really even-handed treatment and consideration of the Planning Commission. I think both you and Mr. Campanella have a great institutional knowledge, it's very important for us.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you too.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. I'm John Campanella. I too am finishing my first term, which I have enjoyed immensely, a great quality of people on the Planning Commission as well as great staff support. So it's been really a, a great learning experience in a number of ways, not only on the process, but also on different aspects of the community that I, day to day, wouldn't really become in contact with or aware of. So it's, it's great participating. I also appreciate working closely with staff on some subcommittees now. It's the, we've started the Multi-Family Design Subcommittee also with members of ABR and HLC, which is very interesting. We have an AUD Evaluation Subcommittee and also I'm part of a Subcommittee on the NZO, the New Zoning Ordinance. These are all critical for the community and it's really great to participate with people that have a lot of knowledge and really want to make things good for the community in implementing these programs and plans. Also, I'm liaison to Downtown Parking Committee, the ABR and the Subcommittee on Sustainability, which also gives you a chance to learn more about what other advisory groups are doing and putting together. I look forward to the upcoming year. I know there's, we spoke about this at our joint meeting, there's a number of implementation parts of the general plan that are coming up, whether it be climate action plan or mitigation monitoring and a lot of those are directly related to land use, that is what we comment on. So we look forward to working with staff to see how maybe some of these items can be discussed and hopefully with our recommendations implemented during the next year or two. So look forward to your recommendation to serve another four years on Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campanella. Any questions for John? Thank you again for your service too, Mr. Thompson as well. The Rental Mediation, Rental Housing Mediation Board? Santa Barbara Youth Council? Single Family Design Board? And the Water Commission? I have a number of people here for the Water Commission. Ms. Bernie?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. My name's Megan Bernie. I'm just completing my first term as a Water Commissioner. Honestly, I was hoping Mayor Schneider was here so I could give her a hard time. Four years ago, when she asked me to join the Water Commission, no big deal, one meeting a month, you're going to learn a lot, your knowledge in utilities is going to be a huge help. That was before the drought, Kachuma had just spilled. We're now at 16.7% full at Kachuma, I believe, or I guess I should say empty. I served as Chair of the Water Commission last year and I am fully aware of what a commission position now means and I am honored to be a part of this commission in this community. In the last four years, I'm very proud that I can look at our community and see that without a lot of regulation, we've allowed our community to reduce water consumption by 33% and also that we've come to a very consensus-based approach when it came to desalination. There were a lot of meetings, there was a lot of official meetings and unofficial meetings and we really all came together and said, this is something that's important as we look forward. And I'd like to remain on the commission so I can see it through, also so that we can begin discussions on things like direct potable reuse and also so that we can keep an eye on the balance, I would say, between rates and some concern, community concerns around rates. I think those are the next two big issues that the, the Water Commission's going to be dealing with on a policy level, where we get our water and how much we charge for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your intense service this past year in particular. Thank you. Mr. Keller?
Mayor Protem, councilmembers, Barry Keller, Ph.D., California State Professional Geologist, Certified Hydrogeologist, Qualified Stormwater Developer, Current Chair of the Water Commission and a voter in Councilmember Rouse's district now. I'd like to talk a little bit about water resources on the south side of the mountains because on the north side of the mountains where our historic reliance has mainly been, one thing, there's not much water there right now. It also could be subject to catastrophic seismic or other event that would cut off either the reservoirs themselves or the Teclodi Tunnel and we'd be stuck with the, trying to deal with things on the south side and there are increasing institutional problems up there and trying to deal with a lot of other agencies. Here on the south side, there are three basic possible water resources, which are groundwater, DSal and collection of rainwater. For groundwater, we have three basins, as I'm sure you know, number three, which is hidden valleys being used right now for reclaimed water because the water quality is sufficiently poor that we don't want to put it into the potable system. The downtown basin here, we've had a lot of problems with the physical condition of wells, but we're advancing a lot on that and one advantage of having so much problems is most of the water's still there, so we have water left there. In the Foothill Basin, Joshua Hagmark's been saying that we're way down in that. However, a review of the USGS literature that I've done in conjunction with Councilmember White shows that that may be true in terms of how deep the pumps are in the wells right now, they're not very deep and actually the total depth of our wells, but really there is a bunch more water down in the bottom of that basin, so it's, it's a resource that we have there. In regards to DSal, I attended the International DSal Association Convention in San Diego and in September, on behalf of the city, toured the Carlsbad Plant and got this Got DSal button on, on that tour. Hopefully, things will move right along. We've got the IDE, the same people that constructed the plant in Carlsbad, working on rebuilding our plant and hopefully we won't have the kind of glitches that we've seen with trying to get the reclaimed water facility functioning, which has been a real frustration and hopefully that will be solved soon. As I'm sure you're aware, we're doing a study for possible subsea intake. There was a special session on this sort of stuff at the DSal Conference. There has never been a functioning subsurface intake at a DSal plant in California. There have been two slant test wells drilled, one at Doheny and one in Monterey Bay, which I actually work on that one. But all DSal plants that have been built are, are sea bottom, open water intakes and that's also true of all the big plants in the Mideast and Israel and, and the Arabian countries. They have not had serious environmental impacts from those, although sometimes there are impacts to the intakes, such as jellyfish clogging up the intakes and they actually have to shut down plants for either jellyfish or red tide and apparently it can be a, a real mess requiring divers to go down there and try and scoop jellyfish back off. But at any rate, we are doing the study, but the Regional Board and with the oversight of the State Board and the Coastal Commission's letting us go ahead with the Wedge Wire 1mm intake on the bottom, which really is the current state-of-the-art technology, so I think we're in good shape with that one. The last thing would be collection of rainwater. A lot of rainwater we can, can be collected off most roofs of private houses. The problem is getting enough storage. I've had at my house on the mesa, two 55-gallon drums for several years and I can fill them up in an hour of a good rain. Anyway, there's a lot of water there. It's not the kind of project the city itself can undertake, but as we have done with gray water, we could encourage people to, to develop that kind of system and provide guidance. So, at any rate, that's what I have to say and hope to be able to continue serving on the Board of Water Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Councilman Hotchkiss?
Thanks for your cogent suggestion about what we can do individually. Let's hope we have some rain so that we can fill up some of those drums soon.
You know, even two years ago, which was the driest year on record, I had no problem filling up my dinky little 100 gallons worth, so it, it doesn't take much rain to get a substantial amount of water, you can water potted plants and so forth.
Have you got just a single spout that goes into those barrels?
I built a little gutter spout that goes to both of the barrels and it only collects off of maybe a fifth of my roof. I mean, I could get a lot more water easily if I had a place to store it, which I do.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Carr. Appreciate it. Any other applicants for the Water Commission?
Is my name on there? Larry Falberg?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Larry Falberg and I'm applying for, I'm a new applicant for the Water Commission. I haven't served in any commissions before. I got my master's degree in science from UCSB in 1971 while I was an engineer employee at Santa Barbara Research Center. Retired there in 89. I ended up working for the city of Santa Barbara, starting in 1990. I got my civil engineering license in 1993 while working in the Public Works Department. My water-related work experience, I'll just go quickly here, construction management, the city water main upgrade program, we did three, roughly three miles a year. of the city water main upgrade program, we did three, roughly three miles a year on that program. Construction management of the Alastero wastewater chem lab and admin upgrade. Site inspection for the repair of a cave-in, we had admission tunnel about one mile in from the north portal. And construction management of the first automated filtration system at the Cedar Water Treatment Plant. And during that time, I also taught a course at City College, Santa Barbara City College, of water hydraulics and pumps. And that was aimed basically at staff for the local wastewater and water treatment I retired from the city in 99, and then I practiced another 15 years on my own. My own practice. And I'll just go quickly, there I did a lot of work on construction of an automated sewer lift station for the Montecito Sanitary District, construction management of their influent pump station, designing and construction of a year-to-year sewer main rehabilitation program for Montecito Sanitary District, designed and managed construction to install backflow devices at points that, at the Santa Barbara Airport, that join up with the Galita Water System, they wanted reduced, what they call RP, Reduced Pressure System. And I developed a hydraulic model for the whole airport hydraulic water system, to be sure that there was sufficient fire flow at the airport facility. So I'm retired again, and I now have the experience, time, and interest to contribute to the Water Commission, but apparently, you have a couple of other pretty good applications. Anyhow, I'm Larry Fallberg. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fallberg. Any questions for Mr. Fallberg? Thank you very much for your application, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We had some other folks come in, I think, since we began. Ms. French, are you here for the Parks and Recreation Commission?
Hello, city council members, I'm glad to be here, my name is Leigh Anne French, and I am applying for the position of Parks and Rec Commission. I have served nearly four years on the Creeks Division Advisory Council, and I have been on the Parks and Rec District for about a year now, and I guess I substituted for somebody, and so I needed to reapply for the next three-year period, I believe. So I'm very passionate about the outdoor lifestyle that Santa Barbara affords us, and the many opportunities that we offer residents and visitors to Santa Barbara. So that's key to my interests, but always at that edge between protecting nature and providing access and enjoyment of our beautiful environment, so I hope you will consider my application. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. French? Thank you very much for your service, appreciate you being here. Is there anyone else that would like to apply? Okay, well, then, at this point in the council agenda, we have the council member and committee liaison reports. Are there any reports from council members? Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. A couple of informational things from the airport. Just a few days left if you want to sign up for the TSA Pre-Check-In Program, and you need to go out for an actual interview, or I guess you get your fingerprint taken, and with a driver's license or, and/or birth certificate. It's not free, it's 85 bucks, but you don't have to take your belt off, or your shoes off, or anything else off, I guess. And it goes for five years, lines are shorter, Mr. Casey tells me, so it's well worthwhile. Second thing is that, I guess that's all I want to tell you about right now. Thank you.
Councilmember White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Yesterday, I attended the, the conference portion of the ACWA Conference on Kachuma. The previous day, they'd had a field trip, which I did not attend, but yesterday, they had a, a session from nine, nine to two, so a lengthy one, discussing the history and policy options on Kachuma. The, it was definitely a, a blue-ribbon group there, definitely board members of all water purveyors in, in the region, some from, from out of, of the region, but clearly focused on, on the, on the San Inez Basin itself. The Executive Director of ACWA was there, ACWA stands for the Association of California Water Agencies, so it's a, it's the professional group that's statewide. He raised a couple of issues, which we've, we've talked about, so I'm glad to hear that they're, they're topmost, at least in ACWA's view, water rates and Prop 218, that's a, that whole difficulty is, is definitely a, a, obviously, the governor is also focusing on this, so it's, the, the interest is coming from a variety of directions, to give local agencies the ability to use water rates more flexibly than we can now under Prop 218, primarily for conservation purposes. And another one was water marketing, of how, while this, we are started, the state has started in being able to have water bought and sold statewide, to use our, the, the great plumbing system we have, we don't, we may not have any water in the state water system, but we do have interconnectivity now. And the halting first rounds of water marketing occurred during this drought, but there's still, it, the system can be much better, it can be much more, no pun intended, liquid. And so that's another area where ACWA is working. Locally, there was a Jim Stubchair, I had not seen Jim Stubchair for a while, he's not just a water buffalo, he's a water mastodon, he's, he was a flood control, county flood control engineer when I came back from graduate school, 45 years ago, he was at the, at the top of the county water system. He became exec, Chair of the State Water Quality, Water Resources Control Board in, at the end of his career, so obviously, a very accomplished man. He gave a history of water in the San Inez, just starting back with the gin chow and the, the lawsuits that, that started at the, sort of the turn of the last century, and then on through the development of the various reservoirs in the county. So fascinating, and that is now all, that, the whole conference will be on the ACWA website here in about a week. So it was a fascinating day, and I think some, some good information exchanged, and a lot of, just meeting, meeting and greeting that went on, I think that will be helpful, hopefully, in, in managing that system going forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Maria?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I participated in Open Streets event this weekend, and at the risk of offending all the people who were there in the different groups and programs, I will call out the United Nations Association and our Sister Cities Program. They had a great flag procession, and it was a very nice event. And then, last week was the Lights On for After School Programming in here in De La Guerra Plaza, and I congratulate the AOK Program, the Westside Boys and Girls Club. It was a very nice afternoon, celebrating the, celebrating after-school programs and the need for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hotchkiss?
I failed to give out the number for people who would like to plug into the pre-check-in, it's 692-6024, 805-692-6024, that'll take you to the airport, and they'll walk you through how to do it.
Thank you very much. With that, the city council meeting is adjourned.